Evening, everyone. We call this meeting to order the regular meeting of Daily City Council on Monday, January nine, 2023. Happy New Year, everyone. At this time, may we have the pledge to flag?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now moving on to roll call.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Mr. Buenaventura?
I think Mayor Buenaventura will be joining later in the evening.
Mr. Sylvester?
Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much. May we have the approval of the minutes for the special meetings of December 12, 2022, and December 13, 2022?
Motion to approve?
Have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to the approval of the agenda. May I have approval of the agenda, please?
So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda?
Madam Vice Mayor.
Oh, that's right. Our public appearances and oral communications, sorry. We've moved it to the front of the agenda, please excuse me. For public appearances and oral communications, the portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council of any issue that is not on the agenda. In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak or to take any action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public joining in person who submitted a speaker card may come up to the podium one at a time when their name is called. Members of the public joining the Zoom may click the raise hand feature to request to speak, and for those joining by phone, press asterix nine to raise your hand and asterix six to unmute. When you hear your name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone. I will now hand it over to Ms. Lilaani Ramos.
For anyone with public comment, joining remotely, please use the raise hand feature. No raise hands, Mayor. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lilaani, and thank you to staff for catching that. Now moving on to the consent agenda.
Madam Vice Mayor, may I pull four, five, and eight?
Are there any other items to be pulled by my colleagues? Seeing none, with an exception of four, five, and eight, is there an approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number four. Set time and place for a public hearing to consider removal of commercial vehicle parking on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard. And we have, oh, Mr. Director Chu.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. This item is basically just to set the time and place for the public hearing. Needed to remove a section of the commercial vehicle.
Director Chu, can you use a mic a little bit more? Yeah, thank you.
Is that on?
Yeah. Oh, much better. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. This item is to set time and place for a public hearing for removing a section of commercial vehicle parking on the east side of Bay Shore Boulevard. The request is to set the time as February 13, 2023, and the place is for here at city council chambers. If there's other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from my colleagues?
Yes, please. Vice Mayor. Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chu, I just wanted to say that once, I mean, it's going to come to council, obviously, to approve, and what provoked this? I know that there's been a problem over there, is that probably why?
Yeah, this is actually a location where in 2015, there was a resolution that was passed by the council to create a no parking zone. It just so happens that that no parking zone replaced the commercial vehicle parking zone. However, at that time, there wasn't a public hearing done, and the ordinance requires a public hearing, so we're kind of doing a cleanup, just a formal license.
Yeah, I just want to say, I appreciate that, and I know that the people on the Bay Shore do as well, because you guys did a really good job of even addressing that other issue with the trucks and to the law enforcement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve item number four?
Motion to approve item number four.
We have a first?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, amend traffic regulations to, one, install six-foot no parking red curb on the north side of Mariposa Avenue, east of the crosswalk at St. Catherine Drive, and modify the existing four-hour limited time parking to two-hour limited time parking in front of Polaris Park. And Director Chu, you have the floor again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. As Vice Mayor mentioned, there are two items recommended for amending the traffic regulations. On October 13, 2022, and December 8 of 2022, the city's Traffic Safety Committee reviewed several items. These two items were recommended for approval. Basically, for the first item, for the six-foot no parking zone, that is needed to improve visibility at the pedestrian crosswalk, and this particular location is located adjacent to Westmore High School. The second item is to modify the four-hour limited time parking zone from four hours to two hours, and that's needed to encourage the turnover in front of the park, just to facilitate additional turnover of vehicles and use of the park. So those are the two items. Funding is available within the existing streets operating budget, so no additional funding is needed.
Thank you, Director Chu. Are there any comments?
Just one, Vice Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so will it be noted on there that they're going to, only it's going to be changed from the two hour? How will they know the residents that it's changed?
The signage will be changed to indicate the two hours instead of four hours.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, you're right, does need to turn over for four hours. Thank you for your staff. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the work on this, Director Chu, especially since around locations, right by schools and also by recreational facilities. So, thank you for your work on this, and do I have a motion to?
Can I make a quick comment too, Vice Mayor?
Of course.
Yeah, I, second everything with the Polaris Park, I know we did some renovations there, and there was like a citizen there that was like, you know, if this is going to be a park for young people, then, you know, we need to have some accessibility, and I'm glad that we're responsive to that resident's comments and feedback.
That's great.
Thank you, council member, for that comment. And now, does anyone want to approve item number five?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And a first and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight. Accept and appropriate 168,000 in Measure W grant funds from the Alternative Congestion Relief and Transportation Demand Management Program for the Westmore Avenue and Westridge Avenue intersections, Quick Build project. Director Chu.
Yes, thank you again. Yeah, this is a project that we're very excited about. We have some additional grant funding to do some improvements at the Westmore and Westridge Ave intersections. These are near Skyline Boulevard. So at the January 2022 Transportation Authority Board, they had their first alternative congestion relief and transportation demand management plan adopted, and that basically utilized some Measure A funds and Measure W funds for the program. On April 7, 2022, the Transportation Authority issued a call for projects for the ACR and TDM program funds. There's approximately $6 million available for the two funding cycles for fiscal year 2023 and 2024. There is a 10% minimum local match for the infrastructure projects. Our staff in May of 2022 submitted an application for the Westmore Ave and Westridge Ave intersection Quick Build projects. And then, to our delight, in July of 2022, the Transportation Authority did select Daily City for the grant funds for the full requested amount of $168,000. This particular project proposes to install striping to channelize vehicular traffic along Westmore Ave and Westridge, right near Skyline. Also, it'll provide some pavement markings to improve pedestrian crossing at the intersection. The concept is to slow traffic that exits Skyline Boulevard onto our local streets and to try to improve pedestrian crossing near the two schools and the shopping center that's over there. The project was identified as a priority project in the city's completed systemic safety analysis report. So the total cost of the project is $185,000. This is for design, construction, and construction engineering. We are proposing the 168,000 grant with a local match of $17,000 from the city. So in summary, staff is recommending that the city council accept and appropriate the 168,000 of Measure W grants from the Transportation Authority. Two is to authorize the interim city manager to execute the funding agreement and other documents necessary for the grant fund reimbursement, and then finally to appropriate $17,000 of unallocated Measure A funds for the project local match.
Thank you very much, Director Chu, on your presentation. Any questions for my colleagues? Councilmember D. Giovanni?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to commend your staff on paying attention to everything that's out there, because between the TACAG and everything that they offer, and all the cities are trying to vie, it's pretty proud that I love to hear the Daily City gets included, and this goes along nicely, I guess, with our Vision Zero as well.
Yes.
So that it adds to all the projects that you guys have done, and the Quick Build seem to be pretty successful, that you guys are always implementing, and I'm sure there's plenty more to come, so, really. And the amount of money they gave us, the whole thing, so, more to come, I hope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for my colleagues? Well, I just want to say that's wonderful work as well in regards to seeking out grant opportunities for our city, and also I think I move to approve the 168,000. That's always great to get more money into the city than out, so. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now moving on to item number 16. Authorize use of city property located at 1401 Sullivan Avenue for early learning center and establishment of capital project. And we have Ms. Betsy Sobel and Ms. Hannah Motherhead. Good evening.
Now, can you hear me? Yeah? Good evening, Mayor and members of the, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. Before you tonight are several items relating to development of a new early learning center for lower-income infants and toddlers in Daly City. In November of 2021, council voted to allocate $1 million in America Rescue Plan Act funds for the purpose of developing a new childcare facility that would serve low-income Daly City families. Subsequently, the city submitted an application to Jackie Spears' office for additional funding for this project, and at the end of last year, we learned that another $800,000 in CDBG funds will be made available for this project. Since March of 2022, staff has been working with Doorman Associates, a childcare facility design firm, on an evaluation of various city-owned sites and preliminary design schemes for the proposed center. Tonight, we have a presentation to show you our recommended location and preliminary design recommendations, and to seek your formal authorization to utilize a particular city site as the location for the new childcare center. In addition, we are seeking your authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Peninsula Family Service to serve as the operator of the proposed childcare center. Peninsula Family Services has provided infant toddler care, as well as preschool and after school care in Daly City for many years. They offer very high-quality care and have years of experience in administering the General Childcare Development Fund vouchers, a state program offered by the California Department of Social Services, which enables very low-income families to enroll in their programs for free or very low cost. On December 19, Peninsula Family Service submitted a letter to the city expressing interest in sending a proposal to the state's Childcare and Development Infrastructure Grant Program. Under the Infrastructure Grant Program, Peninsula Family Service could be eligible for up to $1.5 million that could be used for development of the new center. In order to submit a qualifying application, Peninsula Family Service needs to show that they have secured a site as evidenced by an agreement with the city. In addition, Peninsula Family Service's application will need to include extensive design and cost estimating. Applications are due January 31. A deadline Peninsula Family Service is prepared to meet, provided they know they meet the threshold requirement of having a formal agreement for a particular site. If Peninsula Family Service does not have a memorandum of understanding with the city prior to the January 31 application deadline, their application will not be eligible, and the $1.5 million in grant funding from the state will have to be found elsewhere. To summarize, tonight, staff is recommending that the council, first, authorize use of property located at 1401 Sullivan for development of an early learning center; second, establish the proposed early learning center as a capital project under the city's capital improvement plan; and third, authorize staff to enter into an MOU with Peninsula Family Service relating to operation of the proposed center. And at this time, I would like to introduce Ava Farab of Doorman Associates, who will give a quick presentation about our site analysis and preliminary design of the childcare center, and afterwards she can answer any questions you might have. In addition, we have Heather Cleary, Executive Director of Peninsula Family Service, available by Zoom, who will say a few words about her organization and can answer any questions you might have about their experience in operating early learning centers. And we have a little snag tonight in that the, the design presentation that was supposed to be projected on the screens isn't going to work because of a technical glitch, so you have been given, separate from your staff report and attachments, you should have all received a standalone document, and Ava will work through this. It would have been projected on the screens, but she will go through it page by page in her presentation. Ava?
Number one, I'm Ava Farab of Doorman Associates, preliminary in architecture and here's design firm, we specialize in natural design and design for early education. Do you have a first line? That shows some of our previous projects and some of the tenants of a successful, thank you, childcare project. And there is a lot of focus on natural light, direct access to outside, providing opportunities for natural environment, nature play, providing direct access without steps that you need to go down, which is sometimes very common in childcare centers, and then having age-appropriate toilet diaper areas, having up-to-date mechanical plumbing electrical systems, and improving interior materials of the buildings. And we do do a lot of nonprofit projects for centers similar to this one, for different providers who are nonprofit or Head Start, and we do believe that children who are low-income, as a lot of these centers serve, children with vouchers should have the same quality space as maybe a private center or university might have. So we really believe in them bringing good design to children, and that's what we're going to show tonight. So the second slide after this shows the three sites we studied as part of this effort, and the first site is the 1401 Sullivan Avenue, and site number two is 204 92nd Street Site, which is right in front of the site at Sullivan, and the third site shows the, the site that's at the Holy Angels Parklet, it's 113 San Pedro Road. The site number two has a pretty extensive slope, and there is an existing building on site, so the slope was creating some complexities with construction and also increased cost. And the site number three, there was issues with parking, as well as entry and exiting, because it's very close to the main street. So we continue looking at the site number one, which was the site that was chosen for this, as it best meets the requirements that we have. Next slide shows 1401 Sullivan as a closer view, and this site shows that there is access on 92nd currently, and we propose to save that, as we will see in the next slides. There is a utility area shown on the north side of the site, and this utility area, based on our conversations, does not seem to be able to be removed, but the site we've designed considers that to be kept in place, but we're, plan to basically block it with a fence or something that would protect children from it, but it would not create any complexities for the program we're proposing. And next slide shows some views to the site that we just discussed, 1401 Sullivan. We see the site from Sullivan Avenue, the utility area is shown in a couple of these views, and part of this proposal could be to cover that or at least create a boundary between that and the childcare center. And next slide shows a proposed floor plan that we discussed with some members of the childcare community. This was their preferred option, based on the number of options we had prepared for this specific site. It shows two infant classrooms on the north side of the page, two toddler classroom on the south side. It could host 12 infants and 16 toddlers, but the classrooms are interchangeable and designed flexibly, so they could have all infants, all toddlers, or change the classrooms as they see fit. The middle area of this design shows the admin space, and the two ends shows the play area that's designed for the children. Slide after that shows the view to the Sullivan, from Sullivan to the site, and the purpose of this is to kind of create a before and after view, because this would be the view you will see in the renderings of the proposed ideas for the project. Slide after that, number eight, we have some bubble diagrams of like how we arrived at different options, so each of the three options, I think, has a diagram that shows the design evolution of each of the options, and in this option, we have classrooms and admin area coming together, we're raising the admin area, so we could take advantage of some more natural light in all areas, extending the play area coverage, so we have protection from, especially southern light, but also north light to some extent in the play area, so we have shaded play area and protecting from western light, as from Sullivan Street, it would be facing west, so we're creating some overhang at the entry and then mostly protecting classrooms. So based on this diagram, the next slide shows the finished product of this option, and this shows a one-story option with classrooms at both ends, and then we have a spare that you could enter the childcare center, but also an ADA parking and accessible path from 92nd Avenue, which will bring you to the same entry on the other side. The next slide shows a concept for option two, which is another one-story option for this site, and the idea for this option is providing a home away from home for children, because that's where they would be spending most of the time, so it kind of drives from the idea of a typical traditional house and how we could use that shape to basically maximize our natural light, get some really good protection for the play areas, and all these options, again, keep to the basic tenants of a successful childcare center and provide ample space inside the classrooms, way above what's basically suggested for the California licensing, which is the minimum, and as much play area. So next slide shows this option with, again, entry in the middle, and we see the play areas on either side, and the two small houses on the sides show the classroom spaces for infants and toddlers. The option after that is an idea for a two-story option on the same site, and you will see that, as well as two classroom massing ideas, there is also a vertical connection area that connects us to the second level. For the two-story option, we could pursue two different options. We're showing one option that shows offices on the second level, which could be utilized by Peninsula Family Services or any other nonprofits that might be in the city, or it could be shared office access. What we've designed is to have the vertical access separate as much as possible, so the visitors are not mixing with childcare, which is, has a high security requirement, so it could be used by both. Option B shows if, instead of offices, we have preschool classrooms or older kids upstairs, that would allow for play area in the front, and then we could increase the number of children potentially on this site with that option. Next slide shows this option, as if it was offices, shown in a rendering on site. The area that you will see to the right could be utilized as a play area if it was going to be preschool upstairs instead of an office. And again, all these design ideas or recommendations, they could be massaged and changed as the program develops and as it fits the site. Slide right after that, we will see four photos, and that's just some inspirational photos, again, from our previous project, that shows some interior spaces that we could achieve in this space. One of the things they show is they show these short walls, and they show toilet and kind of teacher support areas that are really what creates a childcare center of quality to allow teachers to use the space while they're in the classroom, and they don't have to leave to go outside for these services, which is driving some of the numbers for score footage and the placements. And with that, I'll hand it back to Betsy. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we also have Heather Cleary here on Zoom, who can talk a little bit about, she's the Executive Director of Peninsula Family Service, who can say a few words about her organization and answer questions you might have about their experience in operating early learning centers.
Good evening, everyone. I'm sorry I'm not able to make it there in person tonight. I am recovering from a cold, but I am Heather Cleary, CEO of Peninsula Family Service, and we are very excited about the potential to build more services for our early learning, for our earliest learners in the Daly City community. At Peninsula Family Service, we support many programs in Daly City, including cot wheels, $5 taxi rides for older adults, peer counseling, and we currently have four early learning centers serving the city, serving children zero to five years old. All of our sites have a waiting list today, and we are very excited to work with the city on a new infant toddler center, one of our biggest needs. Our program is currently funded by Early Head Start as well as the state of California, and we are excited and able to expand our services in Daly City. Our early education program provides extremely high-quality early learning experiences utilizing evidence-based curriculum augmented by our signature Stem From The Start program. High-quality childcare plays a critical role in the future academic success of children and offers significant support and economic relief to our low-income families. Our program allows our families to go to work, to go to school, and to develop a stable life at home. We hope to partner with Daly City on this new beautiful center. We are ready to fundraise for this site and help prepare a competitive application to the state to secure funding. Thank you for your consideration and any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cleary, for your comments. I'll hand it over to staff at their presentation.
That concludes our formal presentation, and we are all happy to answer any questions or comments you might have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this point, are there any comments or questions? Thank you for being here to the architect and also to the nonprofit provider, Ms. Cleary, online, and to our staff, Tatum Mothershead, and also to Betsy Sobel. I do want to add, I was with Director Mothershead when we did, were able to do a ceremony to receive the $800,000 from Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And so these dollars that are coming federally are very important, but I also know that when we did in 2021 look at a very comprehensive local recovery plan, having childcare for low-income families was really an important step to do so. We saw that the income inequality gap widened when there were, you know, no childcare providers, and even more so after the pandemic. We saw that those are our most disenfranchised, the gap is even wider. And so seeing this at the table is very important, and so I just want to thank all the staff today. And at this time, are there any questions or comments for my colleagues?
Vice Mayor?
Councilmember Di Giovanni?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say it's an excellent job. Pleasure to meet you, and I do have a couple of questions. So you were doing the difference in the design, and when you do the level, I mean, I like them all, so I don't know. And then when you go to the one where they're like the little houses? So are they, the same amount of children able to fit in each design, the same amount?
That's correct.
It's just the way you configured everything?
Yeah.
That's why you're the expert? So it's more or less just the outside design?
Have the same number of children. The two-story one could have more children on the second story if you choose.
Or this one as well, or?
Not that one, unfortunately.
Because I know that that's a friendly, we have that second home here, and that, you know, I think it provides a mental, as we know, with the way the children are facing anyway, and they have like a mental picture of like, wow, it's like a home, you know, so that already they feel more comfortable. And I'm definitely not a childcare expert per se, but I do have friends that do work for, I think she's still online, Peninsula Family Services, and they do a tremendous job of trying to make the children comfortable in the spaces to make them feel like that they're transitioning from they're being dropped off, and it has to have the environment of being friendly in a home versus just coming in and just being dropped off with a toy in the corner or what have you. I know that they're great partners in that. So I think these are beautiful designs. Yeah, so I want to commend the staff. And again, I know they were there to receive the money, but it was one out of, I don't know how many projects she brought back money for, for federal, but Congresswoman Speer brought back, I don't know, 10 projects, 12 projects throughout our county as one of her final fundings, and really appreciate her bringing back the money here. I want to thank our council. We had the foresight and staff to recognize the needs of, obviously, to echo of childcare. And I know that if we can provide any more sites, that we never know. We have Congressman Mullen, who I've already talked to him already, and said, don't forget us in Daly City, and that childcare is still in need, and he knows the, our areas, and we have a lot of lower income compared to, not that they don't, in East Palo Alto as well, is one of the identified areas, and so that we can bring more funding back on the federal level and do more projects. But I think that the designs are beautiful. They were well thought out. The light is important. I noticed that you have a lot of light coming in there for the children, which you already know that provides healing and whatever they go through, especially during COVID. And so one in three, you can have more, no, three, you can have more children.
Number three could have more children.
Like how many?
On the second level. I think we could add one preschool classroom, and we could go up to, if it's younger preschoolers, 22, older 24, so it pretty much doubles the capacity. Option three, and yeah, because of building code, we can't put younger children on second level. That's why we're limited in that.
We don't want a lot of traffic coming in and out. Like you say, it's high risk for the children. I think it should be just childcare personally and not bringing in different types of, different other entities, because, you know, we have to be really careful. I think that everybody's precious, but definitely the innocent children, they deserve not to have to worry about those things and the parents. So the drop-off areas, as they go around, is that just, are they provided for the parents?
Yeah, so what we looked at, because of some of the limitations of the site, was providing 188 parking that would be basically entered on 92nd Avenue, and already that ramp exists there, to provide one parking there, drop-off, and then bring the kid over the corner. And our proposal was to suggest, I think it's got green zones here, it's white zones in San Francisco, it's different, but it's like 10 to 15-minute zones for drop-off. Because for childcare, mostly parents bring the kids inside and check them in and then go back, so it's not similar to school where they just drop their kids, so it takes 10, 15 minutes. So it would be only, we're thinking Sullivan, it could also be on 92nd. And I think for the staff, the proposal is that they could be in the adjacent lots.
Yeah, for the safety. Yeah, because they would have to, obviously, because they're so little, they would have to walk them all the way in, and probably we would require that as well anyway. So that we know that they're secure and everything. And I like it that, not that, I would be a terrible, like over mother, helicopter mother, that our PD is right here on the corner here. We have our chief, so, you know, to protect the children. So great design, well thought out, the staff did a great job, and I know it's something they really care about in our city, and I think it's beautiful. So looking forward to hopefully comments, and thank you, Peninsula Family Services. You always do a great job on our street over. Hopefully one day we'll be able to secure another site for them as well, and maybe you could design them a new site. Those children over there just need a new site, let's just say. Putting it out there. We can go get more money, right? But thank you, thank you very much, and thank you, Betsy. Thank you, Tatum. Appreciate it. And thank you, Jackie Speer, and my council for foresight on the funds. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Di Giovanni, and I have Councilmember Das Magwell.
I just have a couple of questions. Maybe it's my ignorance, is this, this is totally independent from the daycare that's like right behind us, is he all right? Okay. Well, I think that as a parent that had kids that went to daycare, I had both my kids go to daycare SF State, and it proved a lot of help for my situation as an early professional young parent. Gosh, it helped a lot, but it was expensive. Like I feel like I had two rents, one rent for my apartment, another rent for daycare. But I know how valuable it is, and seeing where my kids have gone through the whole system from daycare to where they're at now, the system, like pre-K, is very, very valuable. So I don't have any questions. I'm just thankful to Jackie Speer and the rest of the staff, and, you know, thank you for coming. Heather, thank you for coming on Zoom. And I've seen the type of work that Peninsula Family Services have done in the Bay Shore and around the community, so just my comments.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Das Magwell. Okay, Councilmember Sylvester, you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have a few questions. Actually, I got about six of them. Okay. I'd like to first start off from the top on the operational aspects. Who will be running the daycare? I mean, well, I want to preface it, who owns the land at 1401 Sullivan?
The city owns the land, and as envisioned, would own the center as well. It would be operated by Peninsula Family Service.
Okay, so the city owns the land, and I got the word partnership, so is there going to be a lease hold on the land and a duration of the lease?
Yes, there will be a lease and probably a lease payment. We have not yet negotiated the terms of that lease. As is typical, since there is no building yet, it's more typical to have a memorandum of understanding that we will work through those lease terms and return to council with a formal lease at a future date.
Thank you. On the design aspect, I like the separation between infants and toddlers, although I'm not an expert, but I do have kids of my own growing up now. But I do see how it is necessary to separate, you know, what classifies as an infant, say, up to two years old, and then they go to toddler stage at three or four. I don't know, but when you mix them both together, there's a possibility that they could be injured. So the separation is excellent based on your design, so I just wanted to make that comment. I noticed the building, and looking at all your options, the building is a rectangular building with the infant side of the building closest to the north, and the other is the south. So the reason I bring that up, because in looking at your various options, option number one does not appear to take advantage of the sunrise, which rises in the east and sets in the west, because there are no windows hardly on option number one. However, that is different on option number two and three. I just wanted to bring that point up, because I think to take advantage of the light, we should have more windows if we were to go with option number one, but we should consider more windows on that side of the building.
That's certainly possible. The reason we didn't put many windows, we were thinking of some nap areas in different parts of the rooms, but in terms of one infants being north and toddlers being south, we designed the square footage such that it could be interchangeable if they need to have flexibility in the future, so it has enough room that they could build a nap area if they need to, in the toddler area as well. So we're hoping that gives them flexibility in the long term, but the windows are definitely something we could increase or put in different areas as the design progresses.
I like your thoughts on that, but then when we look at options number two and three, the windows are there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. It would have been nice to see the backside rendition of the project. Looks like we're looking at the west side only. And you made mention earlier about the drop-off points, which will probably be, say, a parking lot in the back. I don't know, but I'm leading to ADA access. If I'm looking at this rendition here, it looks like the entryway has no ADA access for those for doing curb drop-offs and et cetera. Is that going to be addressed, like a ramp that?
That's correct. So the, I think that's easier seen in the plan view we have, I think it's page number six, it looks like this one. And this one shows that on 92nd is where we're keeping that entry ramp for vehicle access, and we're providing the ADA access there. We have an ADA drop-off, but we also plan to create sidewalk there for ADA access. The stair we have on Sullivan is just for ease of access for parents who would probably mostly be dropping off on Sullivan unless they're using the ADA part, which then they would drive in and have their own drop-off. So because of the way the site is kind of narrow and long, we're trying to make it easier for parents, but also provide that ADA access.
Okay, well, yeah, all right. Sounds good, but it looks like quite a few stairs to walk up on the Sullivan side, so just as long as parents who need ADA access, they're advised, hey, there's ADA access on 92nd.
Exactly.
Okay. The last question I have, any possibility, especially perhaps on the second floor, if you go to option number three or anywhere in the location, lactation rooms?
That's a, that's a good comment. We haven't finalized the design of the admin areas. We usually do provide nursing room or mothers' room, as we call it. We leave it open to be discussed with the provider a lot of times, because if we have infants and toddlers, they all need lactation. Sometimes that happens in the classroom, actually, but we do have space to provide that if that's one of the requirements. But we've done it in different centers, and we're familiar with it, so.
Okay, great. And you made, this is the last, it just came to me, last comment, you made mention the drop-off. Usually it's not going to be that long, maybe five to 15 minutes max for parents to drop off. Is there, will there be adequate restrooms for gender neutrals with changing tables? Say they're picking up a child, oh, you're wet, and let me change you very quickly. So will there be?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good comment. We do provide, pretty much in all our centers, all-gender restrooms now.
Right.
And that's mostly because in reality, it happens that most of the staff are women, and if you have a male and like male, female, then one restroom doesn't get used, so we tend to do all-gender, and that provides access for everyone, but also it's more equitable in this instance because of the use. But we do also have a specific diaper and toilet areas in each of the pods, so the two classrooms are connected, and there is short walls in the middle that have the, so each of the classrooms have two diaper-changing stations inside too, so if a parent comes, they would probably change the kid in the classroom. They have their own toilet areas as well, and infants usually are too young to use it, but we usually put it in because it's educational for children, and that also is one of the things that allows them flexibility in the future. If they want to have older kids, they actually do have the toilet in place, so the children's needs are met in the classrooms that way.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. I thank you all for your presentation, and it's obvious to me that your prowess and expertise in the subject is definitely apparent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. I just want to thank the staff for your work on this and also for the consultants, and I know that Peninsula Family Services is online. You made a point earlier when you talked about Peninsula Family Services and what services you provided, Ms. Cleary, and you said that even at the childcare centers that you are providing for now, there are wait lists. And so with that, you know, we see that there's a huge need for childcare. I think that, given the fact that this is on Daly City land, this is actually one of the best uses that we can provide for our community members. One question I do have is, well, I have a couple of questions, is this is going to be affordable childcare? You know, how do we ensure that it's going to be affordable moving forward? And it could be Peninsula And it could be Peninsula Family Services or staff?
Well, I can start. Heather, please chime in if you have anything to add. The funding that is envisioned for this project requires that it's strictly for low-income families. The ARPA funds is restricted to households at 65% of median and below. And I believe the state voucher programs are even lower than that. Peninsula Family Service is very experienced with going through the income eligibility procedures. We've administered a contract with them for over 25 years. We provide CDBG funds for the operation of their Mission Street site. And I, I audit them every year or two and I've gone through their files. I have to test their files to make sure they do the proper income verification. They are very, very experienced and they understand it. And they understand how to work with the families to certify the incomes. Heather, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah. The program we run that is a state program, the state determines the fees that the family paid. Since 2020, the state has waived all family fees. And I will certainly be advocating in this budget cycle for them to continue to waive the family fees in perpetuity. So that would be our hope is that all family fees would be waived. Prior to 2012, though, there was a sliding scale based on parent income.
Thank you very much, Ms. Azobel, Ms. Cleary, for that clarification. I think it's extremely important to note exactly, you know, what this program and the impact it's going to provide. Hearing that there was like a zero cost to individuals that are low income, I mean, that's a huge impact, as mentioned earlier by my colleague, Councilwoman Das Magwal. I mean, childcare is so expensive. And if you're living on a fixed income, I mean, it's childcare becomes very unaffordable. And to hear that Peninsula Family Services is providing particularly the state program, I mean, this is actually extremely exciting to see that we are utilizing city land for this use and partnering with an organization that has had longstanding relationship with the community. I've, I think one question I do have, we're approving the use of the city property. We have designs in front of us. When, what is the process on the design? Because I know this evening we're authorizing the use of city property. Is, what's the process in the design moving forward? Because today we're just approving whether, I mean, you know, the site itself.
With the city's formal authorization to use this site, we would retain an architect and pursue more in-depth design development that we would return and show to the council. And then from there, they would submit for building permits.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Yeah, I think this is really important. I'd like to see the maximization of the site, if anything, because we do have, we don't have a lot of land left in Daly City. And I mean, we're using it for affordable housing and now for affordable childcare. And so if there is any way for us to maximize the site itself, I think that then it will yield more opportunities for communities at large that are most in need, that are in the bracket that you mentioned, Betsy. So that's something I would like to see, given the scarcity of land that we have to use. But with that, I think that this is extremely exciting. And to see this on here and, you know, to see that are also our local ARPA funds are used for childcare and it's really on the road to ensuring there's recovery long term. I mean, I mean, I think this is really a step towards really enhancing, you know, community members' lives. So with that, I am looking forward to, I'm motioning to authorize the use of the city property at 1401 Sullivan Avenue for Early Learning Center and Establishment of Capital Project. And may I have a second?
Vice Mayor, is there any public comment? It's all good.
Oh, sorry. You're right. Oh, thank you very much.
No problem.
I'm rusty here. Thank you, thank you. You're the former mayor. At this time, may we have a public comment on item number 16?
Members of the public joining by Zoom may click the raise hand feature to request to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. All speakers will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will have their microphone muted. And again, this is for item number 16. Please press star six to unmute.
Yeah, so what happened to the online agenda? This is John Davy and the YouTube and the, you guys skipped over public comment. What's going on with that? I think you guys didn't allow public comment tonight. That's a Brown Act law violation. You need to recognize the community for public comments. I don't know what the deal is. You guys need to explain that. The DA has copied on this as well as the other. So my public comment is really based upon, not this line. I'm, it's a public comment that I'm entitled to as a member of the community. My case amendment, right, your violation of the Brown Act law and the Constitution. There's going to be, the DA is going to have to look into it and looking up the child laws. What's wrong with you guys? Your website's all screwed up. There's only three members of the council on the website. How come there's not five? You guys don't believe in teamwork? What's wrong with you guys, man? And then, of course, you know, where's Ray at? I don't know where Ray is. And then your, your term, terms expire for some of the members of the commission, such as recreation and arts and culture.
This is for item number 16, particularly on item number 16.
Is my fucking pub coming, you idiot?
It's items number 16, that we're on item number 16.
There are no additional hands raised, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much. With, are there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none on the audience, thank you so much, Councilmember Das Magwal. Now I entertain a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. We have a second from Councilwoman Das Magwal. And may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye. Mr. Mayor, welcome.
Thank you. You guys are. I just want to compliment on the council did a really, a good job, amazing job of vetting this issue. And I really didn't want to add much, anything more because I think all the questions were asked. And I think this discussion was really good. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you like me to proceed or would you like to? I can hand it over to you on item number 17 now.
No, no, no. Please proceed.
Okay. Moving on to item number 17, award construction contract for outdoor fitness court site work, Lincoln Park, Westlake Park project. And we have Director Chu. Director Chu Junior, it says here.
Yes.
I'll say that all the time now.
Yeah, thank you so much. I'm going to turn this over to Kevin Fear, city engineer, for the presentation.
Good evening. Tonight's item is the award of construction contract for the outdoor fitness court site work at Lincoln Park and Westlake Park. Staff recommends that the city council approve the contract documents for the outdoor fitness court site work, Lincoln Park and Westlake Park project, that it affirm the secret determination of categorical exemption, accept all bids and award a construction contract to Golden Bay Construction of Hayward, California in the amount of $253,577. And that it authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. By way of background, in March 2022, city council adopted a resolution to accept two $30,000 grants from the National Fitness Campaign for two outdoor fitness courts. And in July last year, city council approved the purchase of outdoor fitness courts for Lincoln Park and Westlake Park. So the proposed project tonight will prepare the sites at both parks for the outdoor exercise equipment that the city's previously procured. The work involves site clearing and grubbing, grading, slab installation, landscaping, concrete work, lighting foundations, and more. The three bids were received for the project in December last year, with bids ranging from about $253,000 to $423,000. And the three bids and the engineers estimate, estimates, excuse me, are summarized in the report. Golden Bay Construction of Hayward holds a required Class A contractor's license, which is current and in good standing. And they've completed projects throughout the Bay Area, including several for the city of Daly City. The lowest responsive bid for the project is about 1% higher than the engineer's estimate of $250,000. And staff found the low bid reasonable based on the current construction industry. If the contract is awarded, construction is anticipated to commence, as a correction from the report, in February 2023 and to be substantially complete in summer of 2023. For the fiscal impact, the total estimated cost for the project is $331,300. And that includes the construction contract and an additional roughly $77,000 for construction contingency, inspection, and contract administration costs. There are sufficient funds available in the existing project accounts, and so no additional appropriation is needed at this time. In conclusion here, the staff recommends that the city council approve the contract documents for the project, that it affirm the secret determination of categorical exemption, that it accept all bids and award the construction contract to Golden Bay Construction in the amount of $253,577, and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary contracts to complete the project. So with that, we're available to provide any additional information or answer any questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation on this. At this time, does any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Councilmember De Giovanni?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to say that this is really exciting to finally see it coming this way. And that, when do we get to start? And excellent that, on the funding, right? Because I knew that in the beginning when we first approved it, when we had the finger on the back, I thought, okay, well, it's great that we have money. Then I thought we maybe had to match it. But you guys always never disappoint and always trying to find the money. So I really appreciate all the hard work. And we need to use this to the public. This is like a big incentive. And does it have anything for weather? Like, see the intermittent, what I'm wondering, I know it's outdoors. Is there going to be any way like to where, when it does become intermittent weather, maybe there could be a temporary pop-up something, shelter, aluminum, or I don't know what?
It doesn't have any proposed canopy, but it is on a concrete pad. So even though it might be a little wet out there, if people choose to use the equipment, they'd still be able to do so.
You're the hardcore.
Yeah.
Got to have a workout, right? So I think it's a good incentive and people do like working outdoors, right? So looking forward to it and I appreciate all the hard work. And I think this is a good incentive for us, for our health and COVID and mentally, physically for us to get out there. So especially at Westlake Park and any other park. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember De Giovanni. Any of my other colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Das Magwal?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm excited for this program. I guess during winter break, I went around different cities around California and seeing what people, and there are different communities and what they have. And, you know, I'm glad that Daly City can now join the rest of other communities and enjoy like, you know, public fitness and outside work besides just like running and, you know, it's kind of like a jungle gym for adults. But thank you, Kevin. Thank you very much for the work that you've done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Das Magwal. Any other comments? I see no other comments on this. I think this is wonderful work. Any way to get, provide this type of accessibility to our residents as far as encouraging movement is great. And then they're going to be part of our park system. So that's wonderful that this is coming forward. What is anticipated time where, I don't know, I know, I tell myself I'll work out. It's, when do you work out? But what's, for instance, a resident out there, you know, is excited to use it? When do you think the anticipated timeframe would be?
It's right now, it's looking at end of summer. So the first thing we'll do is we'll have some more, a little more detailed design work coming in February. And then we have our other contract already signed and ready to go for the equipment. So we'll work expeditiously to get it done this year.
That's exciting. So summertime, very nice. Thank you both for all your hard work.
Vice Mayor, just one quick question. So obviously, there's going to be a component of ADA in it, correct? For accessibility?
It's going to be within a grass area, but there will be ADA accessible paths to get to the equipment area. And so then users who are able to use the equipment, it's, there's space between the equipment that individuals could navigate. But we do want to make sure, did make sure in the design, that all the pathways will allow people to access it with hard surfaces.
I know people that, yeah, young people that are even in wheelchairs that would love to do this. Thank you very much. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, do I have a motion to approve this item?
So move.
Have a first, do I have a second?
Glenn Sylvester, second.
Okay, have a second. All in favor are actually, is this, it's a resolution. May we have a roll call, please?
Ms. De Giovanni?
Because a resolution, we don't need public comment?
She asked for.
Okay.
There is.
Thank you, thank you. Aye.
Dr. Rod?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura? Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Oh, aye. Did you hear me? Aye.
I was going to come back. Ms. Manalo? Ms. Manalo?
Oh, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the staff. Thank you so much. And now we're moving on to item, actually, we're done with our items. It's moving on to appointments. Any board commission, membership committee appointments?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I'd like to appoint Admiral Rod Juan to the Small Business Commission.
Second?
Oh, second? Sorry. Did you hear my?
Oh, no, I seconded it already. I didn't think I heard. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.
I think I see here by the mayor.
I think.
Oh, you said aye, okay. Wonderful, unanimous. Are there any other appointments? Seeing no other appointments, we will be moving on to item council, city council committee reports. Are there any council committee reports? Looking at my colleagues, seeing none. City council reports? Mr. Mayor, do you have any city council reports? I think none. I just want to say, I really want to say thank you so much to the staff. I want to say thank you to director, I mean, to city manager, interim city manager, Picaletti, and all of the emergency staff, to our interim chief, to our fire chief, and I, all the public works. It's been a pretty hectic time as far as our weather system goes. And it was just really amazing to see how everyone just pulled together and worked as a team. I'm really proud to be part of this Daly City family and to see every worker like ha, all hands on deck. That's great leadership. all hands on deck. That's great leadership, interim city manager, Picaletti. And I just want to say to each and every one of you that are here, Director Chu and your staff, it's, it's when you see situations like this, like, we had a drought. And we were like, okay, there's no rain coming. And then all of a sudden, you know, the rain came forth. And there was just a lot of needs and emergencies. And every department, you know, as far as like emergency-wise, really held it down. And I just want to commend all the staff for just diligently working, whether it's overtime or whether it's doing the extra mile. And, you know, thank you, thank you, and thank you. Because I, it's in these types of situations that are so important. And from also the social media, letting people know, like, what's happening as far as like information getting out there. So to the sandbags, to having a centralized location up at the city manager's office. All of those key pieces were really important. And I know it's not over yet, but just wanted to say thank you to all. It's definitely seen. And there have been residents that also have said, you know, thank you for all your hard work. Yes. Councilmember De Giovanni?
Thank you. In that same spirit, obviously, everybody in this room, plus all the workers, including the recreation, I see Denise, I see Richard, I see Joshua, I see our acting chief, police chief, Lilani, and our驻 city manager, Chayla, because everybody had to shift gears. Because you thought you were going to be on a schedule, and you thought you were open. And then he was trying to make decisions, and he did a great job of making the decisions of what times to make sure that people were able to go home. Because a couple of library people and, and people in residence, they thought they were going to be able to go to the dolder that day. And that was a great decision to close right when the storm was closing. And I want to applaud that because that was, that was timely to get the people back home where the employees could be safe, the ones that could go home, and the other ones that had to stay, like our public works, our first responders, our fire, our police, everybody that came in. And I know that we were upstaffed. And that says a lot, because our upstaffing don't live locally. Our upstaffing lives from everywhere, but they didn't hesitate to get here. And they didn't complain, and they just came. And that really shows a lot, a lot of experience, a lot of heads moving at the same time, and the focus. And the focus was on, what can we do for our city? What can we do for the residents' safety? The trees were coming down, the lines were being sparked everywhere. And our PG&E crews, we have to say kudos to them too, because they worked around the clock. And they worked communicating, and communicating with our interim city manager, and communicating with the public. And I think that that was a big one, and that you guys kept, the communication was great. Because the, the residents didn't feel like they were last. The people at the church where Joshua went out, Joshua went out. I know that you're very humble, and you don't like to be, you know, but I want to say that he went to one of our residents' home and gave them a generator. And they're one of our, our residents in need with a cancer patient, and went above and beyond. Didn't have to do it, but you did it. And that, these are the little things that people don't know that happen in here. I don't know, I can't believe I have tears here. But that, that makes this city, I know that everybody talks about, they're a city, but we're a city, but we're a family. You know, we're, like she said, this, this is a family, and everybody works together. And the size of us is mighty together. And I think that that says volumes. And they know each other. They know each other's personalities. They, that, I think the intimate workings of you guys on a daily basis, I think pays off. Long-term relationships. And we want to keep those long-term relationships here and the people that work here. Because we, we don't want to lose any more employees. We want them to know that they are, they are appreciated. And I see, I think, is that Tatum in the back? And then Tatum was working as the interim during a short period of time as well. And thank you, Tatum. And communicating with the council as well. And then Tom, anytime we would text, right away, right away. And then I know, Mr. Chu, one light out, another light out, your favorite thing, you probably dream about the lights. But, and I also would like to say, this is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Couldn't come at a better time. But it's today and every day. Because for us, we all know that they give everything, and it's 24/7, it's respect, honor, and courage that these men and women put these blue uniforms on. And I still go back to that San Jose memorial service, where the officer said, the uniform, we did not choose that uniform. The uniform chose us. It still permeates with me. So I want, the acting chief is standing there in the hallway. And I know that you were working with limited staff, but I know they all stepped up. And that, not only did they have the storms, we also had people being stopped, felony stops, people fleeing through our cities from other cities. I mean, people really need to stop and think about, which I think they do, and our, our residents really appreciate it. So overwhelming. And it's also much gratitude, love, and appreciation. And I think that there are so many people in this, in this city that support a big community like us. And we're grateful. Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments on city council for my colleagues? Seeing none. Staff, Director Picaletti, I mean, city manager, Picaletti.
Thank you very much. I, I, I think council pretty much says it all, but I can tell you that the staff has been working through these series of storms around the clock for 10 days. Each and every one of them has responded Saturday, Sunday nights. I, I've been on, we've been on Zooms prepping. We've been overprepping so that we could make the best response possible for our citizens. And they performed admirably. I, I know that you're only as good as your last at-bad, and the next storm comes in and we, we see how we perform. But we've been fortunate, some near misses headed our way, but we were very prepared for, for anything that was coming our way. So the, the, and you talk about library, every department was on the, the meetings and prepping, and, and we were overprepping. But you can't never prep too much. But a lot of times, I think it is, it's good to go through. And, and if it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. But we were ready. And, and I think the commitment here was unbelievable. But that also comes from the support of council. So appreciate every staff member, every employee from top to bottom and the council. And, and we do it for the citizens. So thank you.
Thank you so much, interim city manager, Picaletti. And thank you for your leadership and to every single department. Thank you. You have the floor. Thank you, city attorney.
Thank you, city attorney.
It was, it was literally all hands on deck. Thank you, city attorney, Rose Zimmerman, as well. That, that's really wonderful to hear. And you talked about overpreparing. I mean, at least, you know, you went through it. And if necessary, you've, you know, you've, I mean, I think it's better to overprepare than underprepare. So thank you. And I know the residents and businesses are thankful. So big kudos to everyone on the Daly City team. Now, moving on, oh my goodness, let's look at this, 8:18, and we are at adjournment. Is there any adjournments for my colleagues?
I do.
Okay.
These holidays were pretty hard. People going through so many different things. But I'd like to adjourn in memory of my auntie, my auntie, Liz Magboal. She passed away during the holidays. She gave me my first computer. And I just, and to see how technological, you know, dependent we are. She's gone too soon. And I just want to admit, I just felt so bad because being in a large family, you know, I couldn't make it to their, to her funeral. And I wish I was able to be there with all my family and all my aunties and my, all my uncles. But in memory of her, I just want to close this meeting in memory of her. And I'm thinking about you and all the family.
Condolences to your family. Hey, there's adjournment in memory for, for the Villar, longstanding journalist in the Filipino-American community, as well as a cultural curator in bringing Filipina pageantry to the Bay Area, from the Philippines all the way to here in the Bay Area, and was really a proponent of Filipino culture, and has written for many years in columns, and well-known from community members across the Bay Area, and unfortunately has passed away. And to his friends and loved ones, condolences. And, and so with that, in memory, let's all have a moment of silence before we adjourn. Thank you.